I saw him June twenty eighth because we had to do a, I had to do a final meeting with his wife to kind of wrap up all of the partnership stuff and everything and um he's not changed. And he's, yeah, and I heard from somebody today whose dad had a stroke and she said, when my dad had a stroke, they said, wherever you're at at two years is where you're gonna be. And so obviously he's where he's gonna be. He doesn't, he doesn't stand up voluntarily, he doesn't, you know, he can't speak or anything. One eye is closed and he still answers one for yes and two for no. That's his only method of communication is with his hand. Yeah, that's the part, that's the part that scares me is if he is really in there, does he feel trapped and miserable because that's the most he can communicate? And it is interesting, you could, you could say things to him and he does have these reactions that you're like, okay.
You look at him, you look at him and you think, does he, do you understand what I'm saying?
Exactly. And that's-
That's what I'm hearing with my girlfriend.
Oh, really? Alzheimer's or? Is it Alzheimer's or some sort of dementia or?
We have fluid on the brain. He's already lost his eyesight. Every month, all these years, and nobody has ever said this to us. And now all of a sudden they're gonna go to shock or something.
Well, they want to drain now.
And, but sometimes I'll say something to him and he goes, everybody, what are you talking about? And he'll be excited.
Is that new, is that a new symptom?
It's been going on. And I have noticed it and I've talked to the doctors about it and they're like, so. And then I don't know what you're, he started shoveling his sleep more about. And there's, there's very important things that he's doing that the o- the ophthalmologist saw. He was especially, I said, really, and he's a little bit, he suggested it. And he's, he said, I'm not good with them. Um, he just wanted his son to date, he said, I'm not good. And I'm not going to the doctor anymore. He said, but you always think to me, I'm a guy, so. So what do you do? They said, well, he's medical, he's canceled, my doctor, when the worst, he said, just go and cancel, cause I'm gonna pull him, and I get him before. I'm a boy. I can't marry you now.
No, you can't.
So what do we do? I don't know what to do.
Well, so when he makes statements like that, the, I'm, the, I'm not going, you can't make me go, is, is that the, that's the fully lucid competent person to be married?
Yep. He's like, hi, how are you, Dad?
Hey Heather.
Hey, how are you? Oh, no, that's a, okay. Yeah, that's-
Yeah, so, well, I would think of Carter, when you're not, if he did-
Well, it could be, you know, this, this, I don't wanna say the scary thing, but-
It could go on for a long time.
It could go on for a long time.
At his hardest line.
And, and he was, and he was otherwise in fantastic health-
Yeah.
-when this happened.
He ran all the time.
He, well, he'd ridden his bike across Iowa two months before a stroke, so, uh, I mean, it was such a fluke. You know, having a blood infection that you, you know, that he didn't know.
Did that cause us to start it all this?
Uh huh. He had a, he had a staph infection, actually strep, I'm sorry, it was a strep infection, not staph, which of the same, it's a bacterial infection, of the same family. Um, they have no idea how he got it. Uh, he had not had, most of the time when you get strep in your bloodstream, it's because of an, like an open wound in your mouth.
Well, that's what strep is too.
Correct, that's what strep throat is, right. And he hadn't had any of that. Um, so it's still a mystery. We, we, nobody has any idea, uh, well, at least not that she's told me. I don't know if they unraveled it more, but not that it's ever been mentioned to me in terms of where he got it from. I believe, I, I, my conspiracy theory. Okay, this is my-
Well, we think about all these things.
This is my conspiracy theory, um-
That's a good point, I'll, I'll, I'll use that point.
Yeah, because I, I don't, I can't say that I have facts to support this, but, you know, he had had his hip replacement-
Oh.
About eight to nine months before. And-
His body was rejecting?
I, I don't know if he, I think he got it, I think he got it at the hospital.
My first husband-
I think he got strep at the hospital.
Strep, strep or strep?
One of the two. Um, I think he got it at the hospital during the surgery. And I think he was such a superior athlete and in such great shape that his body fought it off for a really, really long time. And it wasn't until, because in the summer of seventeen, he was tired and he had lost his appetite. So by that point, it had already raged and had started to attack a valve on the back of his heart. Now, I asked that question outright at Mayo and the doctor immediately poo-pooed me and said, oh no, you couldn't, you couldn't foster this kind of infection in your bloodstream that long.
Oh, yes you can.
And I was like, bullshit. I, I'm like, I'm, you know, I didn't argue with them, but I'm like, I'm sorry. He had no, he had had no throat issues, he hadn't gone to the, he had gone to the dentist, but they had given him antibiotics. I mean, I, so-
Yeah, I know, I know.
So that's my theory, we'll never know. Um, we'll never know if that's what happened.
Well, that's where my-
More importantly, it was a missed diagnosis, so it's, it's less that the malpractice happened with the hip replacement. I think the mal, and I told his wife this, the malpractice happened when he had gone to this primary care physician twice before the stroke and had said, I'm losing my appetite, I'm tired, I'm winded, what's going on? They never did a blood culture, they did a blood draw and they did a regular panel, but they never did a culture. Mayo knew, when he was, when they lifelighted him from Allen to Mayo on September twenty-third, he landed within forty-five minutes. They knew he had a blood infection. They did a pull of his blood and they cultured it and they knew immediately.
Doctors make me so mad, they really do. You, I think you'd have to tell them, don't you, we need a blood test also, apparently he's fine, he's fine, I said, he is not fine.
No, I, I know my person, I, I, and that's, that again goes back to the whole, you need an advocate and his wife had gone to these appointments, but-
But did they tell us everything?
Correct. And that's not her bailiwick, you know what I mean? And again, I don't wanna say that lawyers are the only ones that ask questions, but we're more inclined to ask questions than the average Joe would be.
Well, you have more, you have some training behind you, because of the way you were taught.
Right.
And, yeah, no, my first husband died, he had staph infection.
And where did he get it, did they know, did they figure out where he got it?
No. It was in Iowa City and I'd go down, I would run every day from work, I would go to Kendall, and it, and it was second. And I was in Iowa City at six fifty every single day. And, uh, I walked in one day and the nurse was, I take this temperature, and I said, how is it? She says, it's good, it's good. And I said, what is it? And she says, it's fine. I said, it's not.
What is the temperature, right?
And then what else?
Oh, it's protected, so then you have to just-
I took my thermometer. I looked at his temperature when I walked in. Then she came in and I said, how is it? She says, it's fine, I said, it's not ninety-nine, which I know you're not, which is very good. It's normal, it's high.
You may. Well, that just, it can spike right away. So, yeah, so that's, so thanks for indulging the anti-conspiracy theories, but that all gets to the whole, he could live this way for another twenty years. Um, I mean, he just turned sixty last week. He's nine years older than me, so we actually-
Sixty?
Uh huh.
You're fifty-one.
I'm fifty-one.
All you guys, listen to this.
Just a kid.
I'll tell you what, I don't feel like that in the morning when I wake up. My feet just scream at me and I'm like, oh my God, what did I ever do to you? And then after I get warmed up, then it's okay, but, yeah.
I know my nieces and nephews sent for me yesterday at a family gathering that I'm the matriarch of the family now.
Oh.
Isn't that nice?
Do you get extra pain?
I don't know. Did I get an extra headache? No, not at that point.
Not a clip.
They said you guys have to bring that up.
Goodness, no, it does go by quickly, that's for sure.
Did you guys do fireworks here?
No.
No, we just do flags.
Well, the flags are lovely.
They're beautiful, did somebody, hi, how are you?
Good, yourself?
Somebody asked me if we were having fireworks, and I said, I don't know. We're not.
Yeah, no.
They keep me up at night. I gotta get my sleep at nine o'clock, you know.
Well, there are some very strong opinions out there on fireworks these days.
Did you hear some this last couple days?
Yeah. You'd hear them popping over, you know.
I found one-
Yeah, and that's supposed to be-
Yeah.
I found one out in the yard today when I mowed.
Really?
I'm sure that was something that, yeah, that-
Someone that downed top works this morning, too.
It's so dry, you know, they've been turned by so fast.
Mm-hmm. Didn't take much.
No.
That was a concern I was hearing over the weekend from most people, just like, yeah, it's really dry, I don't know what it is, it's- So Cooley, is the other, um, is Al from Ailer's meeting on the phone tonight, or are we just reviewing?
We're just reviewing it.
We're just reviewing it?
Okay.
And giving it the okay that this is the offer to her and then she's extending it to his attorney or whatever?
We've already emailed it to the developer.
We already emailed this draft tonight to the developer?
Yep, for them to look at.
Okay, so are you-
We've not gotten a response back from them yet.
So are you looking for a motion to approve this as draft, or what are you looking to do with it tonight?
At, at this point, I don't think he's wanting a motion to approve it yet.
He's just giving them information that this is what it's looking like now and it has been exchanged by everybody here, but no, not taking the actual one.
I think so.
Okay. I was gonna say, it could, it could have six more changes to it.
Right.
So then, you know, we see, okay.
Right. We're still waiting on comment from the developer.
Okay.
Hi, who's representing him? Do you know? Heard my yawn. No, you don't?
No, I don't. We have not talked to an attorney yet.
I just weren't, saw correspondence from anybody or anything.
No. We're not looking for approval of the development agreement tonight, right? Heather, it stays coming.
No, not. Just counsel if any changes they were made.
Okay, it's more of a discussion item, it's not, cause again, it could get changed six more times, so we're using, we're at this point until they say, no, we're fine with it.
At this point, you don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
Oh, is that a risk tonight?
I didn't know.
Oh.
It's looking that way though.
Looking a little shaky, isn't it?
They could call in, be in there. And maybe-
They just email back to you if they're looking to be there for some reason, right?
They should. They should tell somebody, yeah. Seems I published a public hearing notice, be nice to be able to go through that.
We've got on the floor, we can't leave second or third or anything, but, uh- So can we more flags than you came into town?
They look like, they look lovely.
They're equal, aren't they?
I like the stuff in front.
I've had lots of them.
I've heard lots of them, I, I, I'm not anti-fireworks, but I like the flags more than fireworks.
I, I'm pretty proud of them.
They have a more longstanding benefit as opposed to a short-lived boom.
My neighbor, she decided to put flags out longer driveway today. I have had mine out since before July fourth and decided to put hers out today, so.
We had some up around us too. Shavers on the corner and a couple of them up around there, but they're still- Went to my nephew yesterday, I saw him, he said he was out trimming, a kid, a guy was coming along with a board, a bicycle. He stopped by one of his flags and was gonna take it. He said, you touched that flag, you're wrong, you're a dead guy. The guy hooked at it and then he went down around the corner and just stood there and watched him to see if he was really serious. But people have more in their own, but-
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully it's two.
Go for one, come on.
Yeah.
Give me one.
There you go.
We have a quorum.
We have some concern.
Didn't see anybody else coming in, did you?
Sure.
Didn't see a Denny or Curtis out there, did you?
Who?
A Denny or a Curtis, who? I, I guess.
Right, you can leave second and thirds if you have not less than three or four.
No, all doesn't, so you don't need it. Four. Wasn't much of a business.
I'm trying to call them, don't? Yeah, I know Curtis wasn't there last time, I'm always on vacation.
Don't think so.
I wouldn't think so, but- I'm trying to call quick or go with three?
Try calling quick.
My vacation ended. Denise retired a couple weeks ago. So I gotta get to work.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Welcome to the real world.
Yeah, really. Afternoon's gone now, watching TV, eating bonbons, you know.
Do you have any, uh, absolutely?
I'm getting all right. Got three out of town so far.
Hmm.
Stand at four. Settle to a little, I'll write that again.
We left a spark.
Okay, that's it. Six or seven will call.
Oh, they're all, they're all good.
Cool.
So, pretty fast, so. Breakfast, breakfast and lunch. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll probably do the big breakfast, or a couple of big breakfast orders from here.
Okay.
Maybe a bag. Maybe a guy or a guy, that'll take some. Balsam, tomatoes. Farm boys burritos. Farm, like a farm kids.
Yep, farm kids burritos, yep. Uh, the other thing I know would be, uh, breakfast delights. They're excellent, oh God, they're something to eat. They're very, very free to eat. Oh, burritos and others, that's- So I wanna know, cause it decides how I make my potato takes, so I'm trying to get some advanced notice from the planning business.
Riding for a day.
Riding all week.
Oh, are ya?
Yeah, so, you know, whether you need me or not, I'm not available the last week in July. So if you think you need me, you need to plan right now for the fact that I am not available the last week in July. I've ridden the whole week for sixteen years.
For long?
Yep.
Do you belong to a club?
Yeah, it's the same group I've ridden with, we're, we're smaller, there's only, there's only twenty-
Just you and your husband or somebody?
Yeah, there's twenty-five of us, um, and my son is going along this year, so that'll be, I've got him hooked. This'll be his third time going.
Three it is?
Three it is?
Three it is.
Well, there you go.
Well, come on. One's at the river and we just got back from the river. Cannot make it.
All those meeting over at the central court. Please stand and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody, is their mic on?
Could the clerk call a roll of the council?
Um, Denny Bell, Curtis Shares, David Bishop.
Here.
Craig Wright.
Here.
Todd Roffson.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. A second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Uh, Bishop?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Roffson?
Motion passes. Then we need a motion to open the public hearing for the rezoning of Mark Burnow property.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. The public hearing is now open. Have we received any written objections?
We have not.
Then I'll open the floor, anybody wants to address the council, please go to the podium and state your name and address. Saying none, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Public hearing's now closed. Then we have the first reading of the ordinance. Just so the council and everyone else knows, this is Mark Burnow's old dealership down there. He volunteered to annex it into the city three or four years ago. And it automatically comes in as residential, R one. It's just never been rezoned. He's got somebody that's leasing it now, so we need to get it zoned appropriately. They're asking to rezone it to M one.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? That'll be a roll call vote.
Wright?
Yes.
Roffson?
Yes.
And we need four council members to wait the second and third readings, we'll have to put that off to the next meeting. We'll move on to citizens input. Anyone like to address the council? Yes? Gotta make sure the camera gets you.
I hope you do.
Did you hear that? My name's Carolyn Hackwell, two four four Seventh Street in Jessup. I guess my first question is, I don't think it's gonna rain, but would the flag stay up even if it rains? You're gonna, you're not gonna have to take them down, you're supposed to, state federal law, but if you don't, why? That was my first question, I was thinking about that today, cause it was supposed to rain tonight, but let's hope it doesn't, huh? In the splash pad, we have not heard, the residents have not heard enough information about it to see where you guys are coming from or what's going on. The people that I have talked to over there said the walking pat, the walking trail is very, very busy, it chews a lot.
This is Cooley. Yeah. Yeah. Do you wanna go back and have him on the phone? Can we do that?
Can we go back?
Um, you, you didn't do a roll call, he wasn't present at the roll call, so you have to redo roll call, the minutes reflect he's present via phone. Um, and then you could do that if you wanna do that.
Have you looked at the, have you had a chance to look at the packet at all?
No, not really.
It's like, yeah.
Yeah, we're fine. We've already got past that anyway, so we're okay. Yeah, we're good. Yeah.
Tommy's gotta come twice next time.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So you'll just have to come twice to the next meeting. Okay, all right, thanks, yep, bye-bye.
Sorry about that, Carol.
Oh, that's okay, no, 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 that's fine. But that's, that's just, that's just, we don't know what section of Liberty Park you were even talking about, if it did ever pass to go to Liberty Park. And nobody has any information and we'd like to have some information before you guys make a decision as to how this is going to be supported and all that. I talked to people from Tipton and, and Solon yesterday and Solon said they finally voted it down because the timeframe that it can be used, the money that is spent to, to build one is tremendous. The upkeep is bad, the winterizing was bad. And I talked to people from Tipton and they have one and they said they wish they would have never put one in. The cost is very prohibitive, prohibitive for them to maintain. So it depends on what kind of a splash pad you're putting in, I guess. And I, my understanding, state law or federal law, I'm not real sure which, that if you, you can't pump it into this storm drain either because little boys and girls pee in the water, pardon the pee, the word, but they pee in the water and you can't put it down a sanitary sewer, is that correct?
You can't put it down a storm drain, cause it's chlorinated.
Okay, so, but how about the sanitary sewer, how about, you can't put it down a storm drain because it's, so it has to go down the storm drain? I mean, the sanitary.
Sanitary, yes.
So then it has to be processed out at the plant?
Yes.
What does that cost and what's the extra cost for that, or you don't have any idea yet? You have no figures.
There's really no treatment to it.
Right. Does it just run through, but doesn't it run through as per gallon?
Yes.
Okay, see, so they'd still be charged. I mean, I don't know how it's charged, I don't, I don't know that part of it, so. But those were just some questions and they said, and they were talking about, like, the Solon and Tipton people were saying that it only attracts the younger kids, it doesn't attract the higher teenage group, it doesn't attract adults. So is there enough interest in that age group? And then as they grow older, then they drop out, hopefully there's other little children coming up that wanna use it, but. So those are just some of the questions that I had found and they said winterizing in the wintertime is a witch with a capital B. So I don't know what they meant by that, I didn't ask because I didn't understand that portion of it anyway, so. But they just said it takes a lot of time away from their city employees that have more things to do than run after a splash pad for their little ones in the town. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so everyone, I met with the group that's working on that and they wanted to make sure that they had all their, everything in order before they came to the city council. So that should be on the agenda for our next council meeting, they'll do a presentation.
Okay.
Then we'll move on to new business. We have the amendment to development agreement with West Echo, West Jessup Development. This is what we had talked about at a previous meeting. Our bonding attorneys wrote up proposed changes to it.
What are the changes?
So we're extending the completion date for the public improvements and when they certify the what Tipton, or what do you call that?
Tiff certification.
Tiff certification.
So public improvements, the new deadline in here is December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Louisiana, the sewer and the water end.
Streets.
Streets in by then.
Yes.
Otherwise, what happens then?
Then that's when you execute on the performance bond, which that paragraph's in here as well.
Has he seen this?
Yes, they're still reviewing it, so I just brought it to the council tonight to get your opinion.
The developers seen this?
Yes. But if the council wants anything changed, I wanted to get your input too before we, so it's, we're not really voting on it tonight per se.
It's an action item that's-
If there's things that you wanna see changed, we wanna get them changed, so we can take it back to the developer and get his okay on it. And then we're also asking for a title opinion. And there's, uh-
So we're not gonna see it to approve it until he signs it?
Basically until we're, both the city council and him are in agree, in agreement to the terms of it.
Right, you don't wanna do a resolution until you know that this is in fact what everybody agrees to.
Title opinion gonna be done?
Uh, there's a date in here.
Uh, the abstract is to be done for June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So we've already passed that date.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for a title opinion. So you need, the, the abstract needs to be updated, where you can do a title opinion. And the performance bond deadline is September one, so if they're gonna.
So between September and December, he's gonna have it done.
Gonna have it done.
Allegedly.
That's what the council had asked for at the last meeting. He initially proposed spring for deadline. And then we also added language in there that all the existing improvements need to be cleaned and inspected. Cause there's some storm sewer, sanitary sewer that have silted in.
Personally, I think we should keep the dates as we initially had them, like September one for the, uh, performance bonds, and then have everything done by end of December, I, I can't see that happening, but. You know, we've given, we've given them a lot of time prior.
The water mains in there, most of the sanitary sewer, they're lift stations installed.
They actually came here, showed up, as we started working on it, there'd be no issue with being done by the end of the year. Getting them.
Oh, if they came and did what, you're saying they did come this week?
No, I say, if they did come.
Oh. They would have plenty of time to get it done.
It's definitely a reasonable time for it to be done.
First, I think the performance bond should be here before September first. You know, that'll be our first indication of just how serious he is. We got no earlier than June fifteenth on the title opinion. No later than? Later than? Into July fifteenth.
The abstract is updated no earlier than June fifteenth.
Correct.
So anytime going forward.
Anytime going, right, they have to update it at least.
We didn't want that abstract that was two years old.
Correct.
No, I understand that, so when are we gonna get our title opinion, based off of this?
He's gonna provide us with the abstract, and the city will do the title opinion.
By June fifteenth. According to that.
Actually, we don't have a deadline for the.
Can suggest that.
That's what I wanted to have in there. I'd like a title opinion by you by the fifteenth of July.
You want me and not Ailer's and me?
I don't care, somebody give us a title opinion by the fifteenth of July.
Yep, that means the abstract's gonna be updated, and if, if it hasn't already been, if it hasn't already been taken to an abstract company.
We won't have it by July fifteen.
Yeah, good luck, I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna tell you at least two weeks to do an update.
Well, August first. You know, that's, that's a feel-good thing, the performance bond's gonna be the real test.
So are you thinking August first for the abstract and the performance bond?
Well, I mean, we'll know.
Cause it's having there too, that he has to complete any clouds, he has to clear any clouds on title by a certain day. Cause the title opinion doesn't do us any good, if I read it, and there's forty-six mechanic liens on there. Then, now we've gotta fix forty-six mechanic liens.
He does.
Well, that's what I'm saying, he does if we put it in there.
It just says, "The developer shall take all actions necessary to release such liens to the city's satisfaction."
Um, why don't we put a deadline in there too? I know, I don't care what, but.
But the minutes reflect that the city attorney suggested that. What date do you want in there?
Couple of weeks, yep.
Well, it would make sense if your, if your title opinion's done by August one, and you're keeping the, you want the performance bond at the same time by August one, and then all lien clearing by September one?
Is that enough time?
It's his problem, not ours.
Right.
I, I don't know what his financing is, right, so I don't, I, I, I I don't understand, I don't understand how you could pay somebody to do work and not have the money to pay them, so you're asking the wrong, you know, I mean, I don't get that concept.
I assume he knows.
Well, he told Chris that liens are taken care, I mean, he told you that.
So hopefully they're.
If there was any liens, that they were taken care, he told you that, correct? I, pretty sure that's what you told us the other night. That all liens were cleaned up. Alright, so we go into that assumption, so there's no liens left to worry about, so the performance bond should be on a pretty short notice too.
Right.
I would think. Cause that's gonna be the test. If that doesn't show up, then we'll know just exactly what we did.
So September first have the liens taken care of?
Yeah.
Then August first for the abstract and performance bond?
Yes.
Me.
Yep.
Okay, so really nothing to vote on there if everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Then we'll move on to resolution increase in the salary of public works laborer, Alak Brock Flaharty. Brock's got his water certifications. So according to union contract, he gets a pay increase for those.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? That'd be a roll call vote?
Wright?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Roffson?
Yep.
That motion passes. And then, I'm asking permission to use the city streets, the Young Street from Fifth Street to Main Street to close that down for the ragby event on July twenty-ninth. Be kinda similar to Farmer's Day.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll approve the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Motion passes. Then we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. We're adjourned at seven twenty-four.